Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee for Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. Our first order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. The yellow light comes on. You have one minute to summarize, and when the red light comes on, your time is up. Will our first speaker please come forward?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. And I was put at Mr. Kraus. He don't care for me, and I don't care for him. I'm gonna start off by saying, I'm coming to City Council chambers at least 20 years to address unfair and unequal treatment. Okay? I believe in the sun even when it's not shining. I believe in love even when not feeling it here in council, in room 510, or even in the hallway on this floor, 414 Grant Street. I believe in God even when he's silent, and I know God knows anything that goes on in this public administration and here in council. See, what I'm trying to say is this: I listened to the President. I missed the part where he gave Rush Limbaugh a presidential...I mean, he honored this bigot, dope addict. You know he's a dope addict, and he's a racist, and so he took a little girl. From her name, she's probably black, gave her a scholarship, but put this dope addict gave him a presidential award, like you just do here. Sometimes you just give people awards that they don't deserve. Also, I'm really upset, because what I'm upset about is that when it comes to death, if they're Jews, you make a special thing out there. You had their names, all their names. Now, out there in Wilkinsburg, five people died, and Wendy Bale on KDKA talking about the mama daddy. It wasn't pop, pop, baby daddies and all like that. She brought it down to something that she didn't even really know about these people. But the reason why I was angry is that I was listening to KDKA. Crowe had somebody call in and say, "Where is Al Sharpton? Five people in Wilkinsburg. You don't hear nothing about it." Okay, and I brought this paper in to show you. Here go the police in Wilkinsburg at that time, and the people were saying, "We called you, you won't come. We have information." They didn't even bother checking into these black peoples, because they didn't count. See, you just treat us like we don't count. And I say it because I know how you do me. Now, I also brought this, because I want you to see. See this headband? Mr. Kraus is right. When Ms. Harris took whatever she took out of there, because they bring from their country. Look how beautiful this woman is. And see the gold? She has that on because she's a married woman. Well, you can see the gold. I got it upside down. Oh, but she's beautiful, ain't she? Black and beautiful. You just don't think black is, not in this place, but I know. Only thing, when I talk about yella, I'm talking about their lack of pigmentation. That's all. My husband's light complected, he's yellow. My kids are light complected. I'm dark, but only thing they lack is lack of pigmentation. You're no better than what we are because we are dark. I know it. I'm proud that I am dark. I think I am beautiful.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
President Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. The First Committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Will the clerk please read Bill 22?
Bill 22, Ordinance Amendment to Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 241, Amusement Tax, Section 24101. Definitions to update language in the city code. Motion to hold one week, please.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was held for one week. Bill 57.
Bill 57, Ordinance Amendment to Pittsburgh, the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance at Title II, Fiscal Article V, Special Funds, the City Parks and Trust Fund to conform with the Home Rule Charter, Article IX, in order to establish the creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund.
Need a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend by substitution.
You took the sign.
I was gonna hold it.
Second. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah. I just real briefly wanted to thank all of council for working together on this. I want to thank you, councilmen, for introducing, being willing to work with everyone. I want to thank Reverend Burgess, who worked really hard last night and over the weekend with you and on amendments. And I want to thank Councilman Lavelle for attending meetings and working through things, and all of our colleagues. At some point, somebody was involved in this and helping and making sure that we were working together. And that's what the people expect us to do, to work together for the betterment of them, not ourselves. And so I want to thank you all for doing that, and thank you for taking the lead.
Gross?
I just want to also acknowledge President Smith for getting our conversations started and making sure that all the people got in the rooms together, and she was there almost all of, for every conversation. And so, in a moment, we'll also, after we amend by substitution, we'll just motion to hold because those conversations are ongoing, and I'm looking forward to hearing everybody's input.
Can I? Okay. I just want to say again that I also want to thank Councilwoman Gross, because they agreed to do this together, and they both introduced this legislation together. But I really think that Reverend Burgess is so smart, and he adds so much to the table and to the conversation. And so I think together, we're gonna end up with a really great piece, and working with the administration. And so I just think it's gonna be good for everyone. So thank you all again.
So, when I first got married...
Oh, I'm in your seat. I'm sorry.
That's okay. When I first got married, my wife...
It's the mustache again.
...is a nurse, and she worked in the intensive care unit. And she is, as far as I'm aware. She would, she would come home, and she would bring various illnesses with her, because she worked in the hospital every day. She was immune. But I'd get sick. Even though she was immune from the sickness, because I was sick, we couldn't go out. Even though she was immune because I was sick, we didn't do fun things. And so our overall quality of life as a couple was diminished because one of us was sick. We as a, we as a council, as a city, have said that institutional racism is a sickness in our city. We have, we have, we have identified the problem, and now it's time for the medicine and the solution. It is a health care issue, and so we're going to use the health care model. Sometimes the medicine, although not good to you, is good for you. The way you do it in a hospital, they have something called triage. Triage says that when there's sickness, those who are the most sick get the most care. I am, sometimes, our country is a great country, but sometimes when I listen to this president and I listen to the senators, our country's sick. Great ci, great country, but sometimes sick. Our city, which I love, is a great city, but unfortunately, it's sometimes sick. Sometimes even here at the table, we are sometimes sick. And so one of my roles is to speak truth to power. My faith journey forces me to say, "I'm here to help make the blind see, and the lame walk, and the dead to live again." And so I'm willing to work with anybody about anything, but I also believe that I have to establish what I believe in public. I no longer believe that having private conversations alone are very fruitful. And so I want to, I want to be real clear as to where I stand. Over the last year or so, a lot of money was spent to approve the referendum on the park tax. I don't want anything new, and Ms. Strasburger actually helped me to see this really very clearly. I don't want anything new. I just want the city to do what it promised. But I want to remind you of what it promised. Here's what it promised. It promised it would generate new resources, up to 20 million a year in new funding, plus sustained investment in the city. I just wanted to do what it promised. It promised it would spend equitably across the city, prioritizing the parks and communities that need it most, and respond to public input. They would spend the money not equally, but equitably. I just want them to do what they promised. They promised that they would be transparent, that everything would be open and clear to budgeting, and everybody would know where the money was spent. I just want them to do what they promised. We would do it with citizen input and guidance, public accountability, to make sure we accomplish our goals together. Now, these are in various categories. 23 million or so for maintenance, 11 or 12 million for rehabilitation, 10 million for capital projects, administration and master planning, about 12 million, programming for about 25 million. But then they picked 18 parks citywide that would be the focus for the next six years. And they had a community score. How did they determine it? Wasn't by neighborhoods, there was a community score. They said poverty, in particular, in high, in its poverty nearby, especially among minorities. They baked equity into this thing. The percentage of families living within a 10-minute walk from the park, whether the area is racially concentrated in poverty, youth and seniors, health, neighborhood, the condition of the park, and then they overlaid it in environments. And so they came up with the 18 parks. I just want them to do what they promised. So I'm willing to talk. I'm unwilling to compromise on the promise. There are 18 parks that we said we would do in order. I didn't do this study. It's just happenstance that the first park is Baxter, which is in my district, and McKinley Park, and then Spring Park, then Kenart Park, then Ammon Park, then Paulson Recreation Center, then Kite Hill Park, then East Hills Park, then East, then Lewis Park, then Albert Tuck Graham Park, then West End Park, then Fort Pick Park, then Robert E. Williams Park, then Vincent's Park, then Grandview Park, then Jefferson Park, then Sheridan Park, then Towson Park. I just want them to do what they promised. Disproportionately fund these parks in African-American and low-income communities in this order. Now, when we do this, this is what they said they were going to do. They were gonna restore Pittsburgh parks, and it was an opportunity to invest in neighborhoods that had been historically underserved. And so of the parks receiving capital investment in the first six years, neighborhoods with families, 30, 31% of them live below the poverty line. The city's average is 15%. The median income of the communities where the park investment would be, would be 30,000. The city's is 44,000. Perhaps most significantly, the non-white population that surround these parks would be 70%, and the, and the city's average is only 34%. So we were going, we are going to disproportionately invest in neighborhoods of color of park. Now, that's what we promised. We made a pledge to the city. I will, no, so, 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 I said, "One of my goals is to speak truth to power." So I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be silent in the back room. I'm not gonna negotiate privately. If something hits the table that's inequitable, I'm gonna speak it out. I'm gonna call it out. I'm gonna fight against it. If something hits the table that is not fair, that does not make us a better city for everybody, I'm gonna call it out. I'm gonna speak, I'm gonna speak to sickness, not because I'm angry, but because I love you, and sickness has to be cured. And the only cure for sickness is the truth. And so for the, and I, you know, if I was in church, I have four years. If I was in church, I'd have somebody say, "He has four more years." I'm gonna spend every Wednesday, every Wednesday, most Tuesday, speaking truth to power. And I'm blessed. Normally, it's the mayor of a city that doesn't want to go here. We have a mayor of our city who is committed completely and utterly to equity in our city. And so I'm going to bring this council, sometimes dragging, sometimes kicking, maybe I'll lose sometimes, I won't lose much. I'm gonna bring us dragging and kicking, and we're gonna make this city equitable. We're going to cure that sickness, that institutional racism, because, not because I'm mad, but because our city will never get well until we cure it. Because as my wife, I found out when I got healthy, we had a great time together. So when our poor communities get better, Pittsburgh will be better. And that's my goal, and I will do this every day. If I do it by myself, that's okay, because I believe my reward will be in heaven. But I will not be quiet. I'm on this pace, along this road. So let's go do what we have to do and see what the end will be. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Oh, I did raise my hand before. You know what? I just want to take a moment to thank everybody. You know, yesterday was the first time I felt we really came together and talked about it. And under your leadership, Councilwoman Kail Smith, I think you're doing an excellent job in bringing, you know, different opinions together. Great conversation with Bobby Wilson and Erica Strasburger yesterday. Just in a quick conversation, we, they hit on two points that I was thinking the same thing, so I think the key is now that we're gonna be working together, crafting something that everyone can live with, including the administration. And especially when I thank Councilwoman Gross for going down this road with me and actually introducing this legislation. And the real goal was to get us talking about it, and I think we have succeeded. So thank you very much.
No. We've only had discussion on the actual motion to amend. So before you actually, one, one recommendation, because I know you're gonna ultimately vote to hold this bill, I would suggest we vote to hold it until a public hearing has been held. We have to have a public hearing on the increase in the millage rate anyway. We could do both at the same time and then vote both bills, so every, so the public knows what we're fully voting on in its entirety. So that would be my recommendation on how to hold the bill, but... So first, we need a, all those in favor to amend the bill?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the bill is amended. Now on the actual amended bill. Is there any other discussion on the actual amended bill?
All three weeks, please.
Motion to hold for three weeks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was held three weeks.
Do we need separate motions?
No, they didn't call for them.
Can you call for the hearings, please?
Sorry?
Also, a motion to hold a cablecast public hearing on the tax millage increase? The millage increase?
But I don't, we'll have to do that next one.
We have to do that by require.
It was introduced Tuesday.
So then we want to have another, so a motion to hold a cablecast public hearing on the Parks Trust Fund Legislation, Bill 0057. Correct?
Sounds right to me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A public hearing will be scheduled. Bill 64.
Bill 64. Resolution Amending, Resolution Number 794, Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with B2G Now, and Providing for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $59,636 to List the Correct Years For Which the Contract is Valid.
A motion to approve.
I believe this is just a technical change to the actual bill itself. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passed. Bill 65.
Bill 65. Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $8,744.72 to Kittleson LLC for Professional Services in Relation to Lawsuits filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion approved.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. 66.
Bill 66. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Petregallo, Basik, and Responti for Legal Services in Connection with Employment and Law-Related Training in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500.
Need a motion for an executive session?
Removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held. Bill 67.
Bill 67. Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery LLC in, in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,814.40 for Professional Services in Connection with Billboard Litigation.
Need a motion?
Approved.
Second. Discussion.
Councilwoman Smith?
So, I'd like to know a little bit about where we stand with this billboard. We've, I think we've all been receiving emails and questions about the billboard tax and where we are with the billboard tax, and that we're still paying an attorney since, since the introduction of this legislation. And so I'd just like to know where we are with it, if we can get some update. Is there someone here to speak to it? Can we, I'd like to hold it until we, until we can speak, so we can come talk about it.
So we can leave the bill open and ask the administration to have someone to come over and speak to it?
Legal? Okay.
Bill 68.
Bill 68. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Leach, Tishman, Fiscado, and Lamp for Legal Services in Connection with an Employment-Related Matter in an Amount Not to Exceed $13,000.
Motion to hold for executive session?
Removed.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held. Bill 69.
Bill 69. Resolution to Authorize the Direct and Incurring of Non-Electorial Debt Through the Issuing of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $52,400,000.
We have people here. Do members wish to have Finance come to the table?
Yes.
Okay, good. Come on up, welcome. Morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Margaret, would you like to begin, please?
Sure. My name is Margaret Lanier. I'm the Director of Finance. Purpose of these, this bill today is to receive authorization for the direct incurring of a non-electorial bond in the amount of $52.4 million. The purposes of this bond is to fund our capital projects for, in our 2020 budget, and these are projects that were in the budget that was voted on by council. I have here next to me Director Paulus from Office of Management and Budget, who can talk a little bit about those projects and about the budget itself.
Yeah, so just to add on, these are all, this funding would go towards funding all of the projects that are contained within the 2020 Capital Improvement Plan and Capital Budget. So you all voted on the 2020 capital budget in December, so this funding is not in addition to that budget, but more or less to fund every project within that budget that has the designation of bonds next to it.
Could you maybe go over the fee structure here a little bit for members to have a better understanding of what it's gonna ultimately cost us to do this? Thank you. So, good morning. Would that be helpful?
I think I know it well enough, but I'll, I'll compile it. Okay. Good morning. Matt Stuzinski. I serve as municipal advisor, co-municipal advisor to the city. I've done so for a number of years. Nice to be back before the council. So the cost of issuance is, we'll call, will be paid from the proceeds of the bond issue. As mentioned, the project or the debt financing is sized to accomplish $50 million worth of capital projects, no more, no less, and cover, we built in a little bit of, we'll call it the additional fees, to cover those costs into the sizing of the bond issue. And we had originally estimated those at roughly $400,000. But the listing there shows you, at the current time, my estimate is closer to $300,000, and there are standard participants in these type of financings. You have bond counsel. Bond counsel serves to prepare the documents in terms of the legislation that you have before you this evening. They're also preparing closing documents, application to DCED, final documents, closing documents, and most importantly, they're issuing a legal opinion that says these bonds are issued in compliance with federal tax law, state law, local law, and they are federally tax exempt. So that's very important to the investors who purchase these bonds. In addition, that list includes other participants in the financing, folks like the rating agencies. We are applying to both Fitch and Standard and Poor's. They require a fee in order to rate the bonds. Keep in mind, the rating agencies serve the, we'll call it the investor community, not so much the city, but of course, they are a conduit to us, and that without their rating, these bonds would sell at a much higher interest rate. With the assignment of their rating, we get to sell the bonds at a lower interest rate. That becomes important to the overall success of the sale. Also included then there in the list is Underwriters' Counsel. Underwriter, the lead underwriter for the transaction is PNC. Underwriters' Counsel prepares the final, we'll call it the preliminary official statement, which is the prospectus document that's circulated to the investor community, that is used to assess whether or not it's a investment that they want. These investors want to invest $50 million in purchasing for their portfolios. They also prepare a bond purchase agreement and some other closing docs that are important to the overall transaction. There's a paying, we'll call it a registrar paying agent, that's Bank of New York Mellon. That fee is included in there. They are, they serve to hold the bond proceeds and distribute those bond proceeds to the city as it expends those dollars and pay the fees on behalf of the city. There is municipal advisory fee, that's myself and Davenport. We share that fee under an agreement that council has previously approved. And there's the underwriters' fee, which is, again, split, will be split between basically five firms. That's PNC, I'm sorry, four firms, PNC and three other co-managers, who the city will decide over the course of this week who that might be, two of which will certainly be minority participant co-managers. That's been the city's policy for the last handful of years, and we'll continue that policy. Does that help in terms of the explanation? Or are we into questions?
Just briefly, if I may, and then I'll relinquish. Previously, when we've entered into bond agreements, we tend to hold off a final approval because there could be some fluctuation in the rate. Is that applicable here as well?
So that's an old, that's an old, we'll call it process, no longer adopted by the city. When the city approves this legislation, they're basically allowing the finance director to approve the final sale of the transaction, so we don't come back to council after that. But we do provide recap back to City Council after the sale, letting you know what the ultimate results of the sale were, how the transaction went, but we don't seek final approval. You're doing so at this, this, or passage of the ordinance, or consideration of the ordinance, resolution.
You asked, just, just to, I don't know how to ask this question. We don't expect any major fluctuation by any, any means, but there's not like a cap of any kind of fluctuation that could possibly take place?
We don't want this at 15%.
If I just may.
So there is a cap in the legislation.
Okay.
Currently, that cap is 5%. We are currently in a market...
In either direction.
And that's the cap on the ceiling. There's no cap on, as far as, we'll, we'll take it.
We'll take it as low as we can.
As low as we can get it.
Sure.
Current market suggests that we would have a net interest cost of roughly 2.5% compared to last year, where we were almost 3 and 3/8%. We're about 75, 80 basis points lower than we were last year on a $50 million debt offering. That's $5 million worth of savings year over year in interest expense, so we're in a very attractive interest rate environment. But there is a cap, and we are obviously sensitive to that cap, and let's, the goal is to be in the marketplace by the end of March, so we, again, current interest rate environment suggests that we should be stable.
I didn't quite know how to answer, ask the question, but you answered the question that I had. And then the last one I have, please, is the, our, our ultimate payoff, we're looking at a schedule of X amount of years and looking to relinquish this debt by...
So that's in compliance with the debt policy, which is 20 years level debt service structure. So it's just like a home mortgage. It's paid off, you know, principal a little bit lower in the early years, but it is, I would, I think Mr. Urbannick had passed out is a debt profile that we reviewed at the council briefing yesterday, which shows how this $50 million debt offering weaves into the existing debt portfolio. And the city's debt portfolio, I should tell you, is in very good position. This debt, issuance of debt complies with all the debt policy and is well positioned in terms of keeping a relatively stable annual debt service payment until you get to a debt cliff that comes up in 2027, where you're gonna have some nice relief in your overall debt profile. So this, and the key indicators of your debt analysis are in very good position.
Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
I have Councilman O'Connor, then Councilwoman Gross.
Okay. So, how much are we going to spend this year? Are we going to spend all of it? This upcoming year?
David Hutchinson, Assistant Director of Capital and Asset Management. We've gotten better at spending more of the bond in the first year. I think for the 2019 bond, as of the end of January, we spent twenty-three million out of sixty million. And we have IRS regulations that dictate how much we need to spend within three years, so we're, we're very aware of that.
So, I'm going with this is, I think we mentioned it last year, that we didn't have the ability to do, to spend that much money. And clearly, there are projects, and I don't want to get into it, but there are projects that we start and just sit there vacant for a year. Now, I suspect it was, had to deal with elections and other things because you want to show that the parks were in terrible shape, and I didn't want to go through all that, but if we're going to get this money and we allocate it, we need to do a better job of getting these projects done. When we go into our neighborhoods and we go and we say, look, this, we have two hundred thousand dollars for this, and these parks or whatever it might be sits there vacant, that's frustrating, because we might as well make the bond twenty million dollars, because in reality, that's all we're going to spend. So, that's the only thing that I'm frustrated with when we get these big numbers and then our projects sit there and they don't do anything. So, let's make sure we spend it. I got no problem taking out bonds and spending it. I'm going to vote for it. I think that's great, but let's make sure we actually do it. If we have to hire more people, let's hire more people. And then a technical question, I think a couple of years ago, we talked about this, that on a bond, is there a percentage that can go to, not necessarily an individual, but to benefit not just the city, but like, let's say we'd used it for housing?
Water service lines or?
Yeah, or, could it not bene- I thought there was a percentage, you told me a couple of years ago, like five percent of the actual bond number could go to some individual benefit? Not, I mean, we're not doing it for Mary Smith and Tom Smith down the street, but doing a service line that connects to somebody's house or rehabbing five properties. Isn't there a percentage of a bond that can go to that? So, there's. I remember we talked about that a couple of years ago. I just want to make sure I was.
Right, so there's a couple of issues there.
Yeah.
One, private use in terms of a tax-exempt bond offering and a portion of which can be used for private use, and as an example, I would suggest something like if you were to operate, build, use these proceeds to build a rec center or a community center, some portion of it could be used to house a for-profit daycare inside that. It has to be a, an amount that's less than five percent of the overall debt offering.
So, you would take that money, okay. All right, I remember there was a percentage, that's.
Right, so that's one consideration. But the other consideration is.
Now that we're going to do it, I just, I wanted to make sure that last time we talked a couple of years ago, I remember you had mentioned something.
The other consideration is what is eligible under state statute that qualifies as a general obligation issuance of debt? And there's, there's where I would, I'd have to defer to bond counsel and their opinion as to whether or not the use of those proceeds meet a capital cost, which is key to the overall borrowing and the purposes allowed by the state statute as it relates to issuance of bonds.
What it can be used for. Yeah, I just, I vaguely remembered we had talked about that, so. Okay, that's it. All good. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, appreciate it. Those were great questions, and I'd like to follow up on some of them. Thank you, Councilman O'Connor. So, we haven't been spending down, we didn't spend down last year's bond, the 2019 bond. How much, how much lag do we have on our previous issuances?
I believe we spent fifty million out of the 2017 issuance.
Okay, so, and that was a sixty million?
Yes, split over two years.
Okay, so, yeah, so thirty, thirty, but still, there's, so there's ten left in the bank for those projects, and there's thirty left in the bank from last year's projects. Am I doing my math right? Did I get the right numbers? Right, and so we have forty million dollars sitting there that we are, is waiting for the projects to be finished.
Most of it's committed in, as a local match in our big kind of federal highway transportation improvement program projects.
Hmm, which are, can you give me a short list of those?
Charles Anderson Bridge, Penn Avenue Phase One, Penn Avenue Phase Two, Swinburne.
Penn Avenue Phase One is done, so, so that's not.
That's just an example of that type of project.
Penn Avenue Phase Two is about to start.
Yeah.
All right. And then, so the new fifty million, well, I, I suppose, like, all of our staffing and even project managers using subcontractors are going to be busy finishing the three-year lag of projects. Who's going to implement this fifty million dollars worth of projects?
They work simultaneously on multiple fund sources at once.
Sounds like we need a few more project managers at least, if not actual laborers and people who can actually do the contracts. And I, I just want to say to members of council, so similarly, just a few years ago, PWSA was not really succeeding on spending down the bonds that we were intending to do for our issuances, and it was a big, it was a big problem, right? And so, we've increased our internal capacity, especially after firing Veolia, the corporate overlords who had the privatized operations of PWSA, and hiring up internally. We have a lot more people who are implementing projects, and we have a lot more project managers who are able to manage subcontractors, so we're really deploying and spending down the capital. And you see the public results, right? You see seven thousand lead water service lines replaced on private property as well as public property. And so, we know that we need that internal capacity here at the city in order to make these projects actually happen. So, what we didn't do in this conversation today, we made just one reference that it was to cover the capital budget that we just voted on, but could you give us a kind of summary of the fat, the numbers that eat up a lot of the fifty million, just like you did for the, the last three years of projects? What are the future projects?
Yeah, they're actually in spreadsheet that was distributed yesterday's briefing.
Well, the, the public can't see them, so if we could just talk.
Yeah, they're also.
Just a few seconds on what the big projects are.
In the budget itself, any of the individual pages, there's deliverables on the second page, anything listed with bond would be on that same list. That's what the intended use is for that fifty million dollars. Then in the back, there's actually.
But let's say them out loud instead of referring to page numbers.
Sure.
So, for example, one that jumps off the page is smart signals and mobility and infrastructure across the city at three million. We have another one on Thaddeus Stevens Special Deployment Division jumps off the page at two million. Police Zone Five relocation at almost three million. Are there others that are going to jump off the page for you?
Yeah, bridge upgrades for two point three million dollars. Complete Streets, which includes a number of projects with signals and also with new stop, stoplights at four point four million dollars, and public safety facilities in general for six point one million.
We know that we've talked a lot about public safety and, and all of our public buildings where our employees work that are in terrible unsafe conditions, that we definitely need those done as soon as possible, so I know that the public is supportive of those projects. I want to switch over to one of the things that I had been planning to talk about, which is that when I got here and the first time we had this discussion of a bond, it must have been that earlier, first sixty million dollar one, or maybe it was a refinancing, I can't remember, or it was the first capital project. I, and the public again, I hope, Madam Clerk, that we're attaching this handout to the, today's legislative session, because that debt cliff here was back with different year numbers. It was, 2019 was the debt cliff.
Well, that's, that's in fact true. We have another debt cliff coming up.
But we borrowed, so we pushed it back in time, basically. There was a slight cliff, and so I'm going to say these numbers out loud, too. Right now, our total amount that, out of like the tax dollars that we're collecting for 2020, of the, let's say we collect six hundred million dollars in people's taxes and fees, we'll be spending out fifty-five million, if I'm reading that with my granny glasses, my readers on.
Annual debt service is approximately fifty-five thousand, fifty-five million dollars.
And the first time I, I had this conversation six years ago, it was at eighty, and we were only collecting about five hundred million, and that was really alarming, that of all the money we got in the door, that such a significant percentage was just turning around and going right back out again, right, nearly twenty percent. So, what we're at now is definitely a lower percentage of our total revenue, but it didn't drop off as much as we had hoped, right, because we, we started borrowing again, which is good if we're actually completing the projects. So, just to speak to, right, the conversation we just had, we really do need these things, these improvements out there after fifteen years of austerity in our city parks, on our city streets, and even the social infrastructure, things like funding for daycare facilities. And, and so, I'm concerned that we've, we're carrying this debt, but I, I will issue a caveat, I'm not as concerned that, I would be more concerned if it wasn't at two and a half percent. I have to say, that is pretty amazing, right? So, it makes me more supportive today, but I just want to call out for the public's attention that we were kind of supposed to get way down at 2019, and we borrowed repeatedly. Now, this is the third issuance, maybe, that I can recall, but I think one of them was an extension, so there would have been four, that has pushed that cliff back, because I kind of think that we should have, although we have a lot of capital projects to do, we need to do them in order to justify this level of carrying of debt.
So, if, if I could, so the debt cliff that you're specifically speaking to, actually, we did realize that from 2018 to 2019, I believe, excuse me, our debt service payment in 2018 was around seventy-two million, and it dropped down to fifty-two million in 2019. And what that allows us to do is borrow more responsibly moving forward, and that's something that we've codified through, that we, were taught through Act 47, that our debt service cannot exceed twelve percent of our, our budgeted expenditures. At one point through Act 47, I think it was as high as twenty-three or twenty-five percent.
That's so horrible.
And before the debt cliff, it was even at thirteen or fourteen percent. It now has dropped down to nine percent, which allows us to borrow more responsibly and to the, like Matt stated earlier, with those credit ratings and the credit rating agencies, they, that looks very favorable for us in the way we budget and the practices that we carry forward, even though we are no longer in Act 47.
Okay, just to, to reiterate, though, that our revenue was higher, and so, the debt, total debt payments in service and interest are lower than in 2014 or 2015 when I first got here, has brought that percentage down. I think you just said twelve percent?
It's actually, currently, it's below ten percent.
And then after this issuance, yeah.
Well, this, this issuance is already factored into the operating budget, which is, which still remains below ten percent.
So, again, let's just say that, because that is really laudable, right? So, from, at the worst point in, during, under Act 47, it was at twenty-three percent.
I believe that's correct, yes.
And so, it's under ten here, even if we, after we vote yes today, we support this issuance, and that we are still looking at really stable revenue, it's been increasing yearly, and that we, we're still looking at just a short seven years away having a tremendous drop in both bonds and debt. Margaret, you, I kind of leaned forward when we talked about revenue. Do you have something to add there?
No, just like Kevin said, you know, and you, you said that revenues are up more.
Yeah.
You know, we're doing great in collecting the revenues.
Great, all right. So, I'm supportive today. I don't love voting to borrow money, but this is incredibly cheap money, and thank you to all the parties who are responsible for getting us such good kind of credit ratings in the bond market, and so let's see about getting some of these projects done. Thank you.
Russ Berger?
I have a different kind of question. I've been reading a lot about the inverted yield curve over the last year or so, and can you just explain to me what that means for a city like Pittsburgh? Do we need to be worried, or is that more of a national, domestic issue?
Do you mind if I take that? So, the inverted yield curve, we'll, we'll refer to, is just where the short end of the yield curve in terms of interest rate is higher than years out. So, if the year one interest rate was two percent and year five was once at one and a half percent, that short-term rate is higher than a midterm yield or a long-term yield. But we, what we had is more something that looked like a parabola in terms of the early years where, you know, slightly higher than, for example, year five, but when she started to get out to year ten and twenty, interest rates started to increase again. The inverted yield curve is supposed to be a leading indicator to a recession, and since the Fed adjusted rates and started to lower rates since we, we'll call it, since they went on a path to increasing rates and then started to lower rates, the yield curve is no longer inverted. The short end of the yield curve is in fact lower, that meaning the one-year rate is lower than the two-year, and the two-year is lower than the five-year. So, it's a, we're back to a normalized increasing interest rate yield curve. That basically means that an investor who's investing out five years gets a higher return than somebody invests for one year, and it looks more normalized, and that concern is really no longer in the marketplace. And so, it's been somewhat dismissed, and you see, generally speaking, yields lower over the course of last year, as I mentioned, yields from just last year at this time are down almost one percent across the yields, all across all maturities. And keep in mind, when we sell bonds, we're selling bonds over twenty years with a certain principal amount coming due each year with a different yield, so it reflects that increasing yield curve. So, a buyer of Pittsburgh bonds who buys year one expects to get a lower interest rate than someone who buys a five-year bond, or a ten-year, or a twenty-year. The longer out on the yield curve you go, the higher the yield is expected to receive in terms of the investor return, and we're expected to pay that, and that's normal for us. And that aggregate reflection of all those yields, as I mentioned, is closer to about two and a half percent currently, where last year at this time, it was closer to three and three eighths. Does that help?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yes, Matt, I want to tell you, I was comfortable with you from the beginning, you know, when we sat and we talked for, I guess it was about an hour, but, so you made me comfortable with the whole process. But like Councilwoman Gross, I'm never in the market to borrow money, you know, even with the incredible interest rate that you have, that's fantastic. And I didn't realize until Councilman O'Connor said that we didn't have the capacity to spend that money. It's, it can be a real problem, so even at two and a half percent, if we're not utilizing it and putting it in there, we're just paying interest on money we're not using. So, I would love to see more capacity to do so, get projects rolling. I, I was thrilled to see nine hundred thousand dollars in this for the Public Works Division and Councilwoman Krause's district, but so much affects mine and Councilwoman Kille Smith's district, so, so, so that's, that's great. I'm comfortable with it, I'm supportive of it. You know, going forward, though, let's, again, make sure these projects, I guess, get taken care of, because the, let me just ask you one other thing. The idea of a bond, of course, is because future generations are going to be gaining from this, and they should be paying for it as well. Your opinion?
One hundred percent. We look to bond those projects that have a long useful life.
Sure, right. Which is defined by twenty years. Okay, good. All right, thanks.
Councilman Wilson, sorry. It's all right. Just want to know how you, well, thanks for the presentation yesterday, it was great. Definitely for someone like myself, just getting into the city council and understanding how the debt is playing out for us. So, I just want to ask, how did you become the advisor for the city?
So, we went through an RFP, a Request for Proposal process, and we were selected by the staff through the process, and we submitted jointly, my firm, which is just myself, along with the firm Davenport, which is out of Virginia, they're in the, they cover the mid-Atlantic region, and I would say primarily, I think the, the strength of the team is covering, we'll call it, similar cities, similar cities like Cincinnati and Baltimore and Cleveland and in our past experience. So, I think that was the strength of the team that we presented to the city when we were selected.
I may have missed this. How long you been working with us?
So, I go back to 2012.
Thanks.
Sure.
Further discussion? Councilman Burgess?
Obviously, first of all, thank you for all your work. We were part of this bond issuing plan probably six, eight years ago, where we decided that we would do these smaller borrowings basically every two years. We realized that by doing the numbers, we could stay under the debt cliff, and I was fortunate to be at the table when those discussions were had. We led in terms of the legislation that set up our current fiscal limitations, and then I think I was finance chair a few years ago when we, recently, when we set up even greater limits in terms of this, how this debt structure stuff is going. And so, I want to congratulate you on your work, and by working together, we have made our city financially stronger. Certainly, we hope that with this new income that we will have, not with this bond borrowing, but when we do the park tax, certainly, it will give us a little bit more capacity. But as the finance people are, are sitting here, are being nice enough not to say, that a lot of the reason that. that a lot of the reason that money doesn't get spent is really not just our capacity, that is part of it, but it's actually more nuanced than that. Because the money has to be set aside for matching money that we don't control. There are grant funds, there are state funds, there are federal funds that this money leverages. And that oftentimes, it sits there not because we can't spend it, but because we will not, it doesn't make sense for us to spend it when it's sitting there waiting for the other num, other matching monies to occur. I've been, because I've been here a long time, I kind of know how the government works and how this works. And so, we, perhaps, a little bit more capacity will be helpful. But still, because we are doing these long-term projects, most of it, not most of it, but many of it being matched with, with other funding, we're going to always have this lack, this lag from when we, we have it to when the projects get done. And it has a lot to do with the speed of those matching monies come. It's, it's hard. So, I want, I guess it's hard to do this, to get the money out, right? It's hard. Any extra that you do not need, let me know. And we'll figure out, you know, I do have some projects that I can help you.
Come on, he already has it spent.
Yeah, if there's, you know, there's, there's, there's some, there's more housing and there's some social services, we can figure out a place to put the right, right, Margaret?
Yeah.
Yeah, Margaret, we can figure out the places, right? Yeah, we, there's a place, we can figure it out. And so, but I really, I really wanted to say congratulations to your work. I know that I am, I am a fan of what we're doing fiscally of our city. I'm very proud to have been a small part of it. And I also want to publicly thank Bill Arbatic. Bill, thank you for your work in representing council and, you know, in this whole endeavor and, and being able to, being our translator, right? This, this, this bond stuff is technical. And it's almost like a foreign language, and you need a translator. And so, Bill is our designated translator. And is able to make this crazy, complex mathematical stuff simple and understandable. And so, thank you for your work. And he has assured me before this that this is the right thing to do. And so, we'll vote in a positive affirmative. And let's keep, let's keep doing this together, making our city great.
Thank you, Councilman. Further discussion?
I just wanted to add one thing. If we have any trouble spending this money, we can bring my daughter in. Two days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Bill passes. Bill 67 was still open. However, the appropriate person from the administration cannot come today. They're actually in court. So, they've asked, do we hold it for one week? And then it'll be here next week to discuss it. Okay. So, I need a motion to hold Bill 67 for one week?
Motion to hold.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, that bill is held for one week. Can we read Bills 72 and 73 together?
Bill 72, resolution further amending and supplementing resolution number 855 by transferring a total of $20,000 within District One Neighborhood Needs to War Memorials. Bill number 73, resolution further amending resolution 549, providing for an agreement in services for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program and providing for the payment of the cost thereof by transferring $20,000 within District One Neighborhood Needs to War Memorials.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, both bills passed.
No, no, it's, so this is Neighborhood Needs money that was, was allocated to one group. And the concern is that there will be a fundraising, there'll be some issue fundraising that money, so they can be reimbursed. And so, we're looking to do the project through the Art Commission. So, running that through city planning and making sure that it gets done in a timely manner. So, the first, 72 is transferring, and then 73 is authorizing those funds. So, thanks, thanks for your. Yeah, it's, so there are some in Brighton Heights that, you know, we're looking to do.
Thank you.
We, we do have invoices for approval. Need a motion for the invoices?
Emoved.
We don't have invoices, do we?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't sign them.
Any opposed? Saying none, the invoices are approved. We do have P-cards for approval as well. We need a motion to approve the P-cards. So, moved.
Second.
Any conversation? Saying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, P-cards are approved. That moves us to Public Safety, Bill 70, chaired by Mr. O'Connor.
Bill number 70, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into financial and in-kind sponsorship agreements for the city's Office of Special Events 2020 season.
Motion to hold two weeks. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held two weeks?
Two weeks.
That moves us on to the Public Works Committee. Mr. Coghill is the chair, Bill 90.
Bill 90, resolution further amending and supplementing resolution number 591, which, resolution providing for an agreement with, I'm sorry, providing for agreement for repairs, maintenance, improvements, emergencies, and/or the purchase of materials, equipment, supplies, and professional services in connection with the bike infrastructure program. And providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $836,632 to account for both previous work completed on bike infrastructure projects utilizing resolution 591, and to account for the new total bid amount for the Gap to the Point project not to exceed $955,155.96.
Second.
Motion? Councilman Smith?
Yes, could, could you come to the table, John? Could you talk to the running director? Could you introduce yourself to the public?
I'm Corinne Rex, I'm the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you. And could you just give us a little bit of idea of where these projects were?
Yes, so the, the title Bike Infrastructure Program is a very nebulous project. This is a project that we refer to as the Gap to the Point project. So, this is completing the connection from the Great Allegheny Passage to Point Park State, Point Park State Park.
And then I just want to say, I mentioned to you before, and I mentioned to the administration, as we're talking about connecting all these trails, a while ago, Mayor Murphy connected trails throughout the city of Pittsburgh. And they were, they were all throughout all of our districts, and they did connect one another. And I don't know the extents, you know, to how they were connected and which neighborhoods and all that. But I do know you could take a bike ride across District 2 in a very safe way. And, and those trails were overgrown and never used after Mayor Murphy left. And I'm wondering if we have any kind of maps that we can maybe open up those trails again? Because it seems to me there's already a bike infrastructure here waiting for us to use. If, and not impeding upon the roadways or businesses that would actually be, you know, similar to maybe the Maun torch rail.
Right.
And so, I'm wondering why, if we can try to get some information about that. We talked briefly, I talked again yesterday with the administration about it. I would like to see us do some of those things, and not just always closing down a road. I think everybody wants great bike infrastructure. What we don't want is to inconvenience current residents, current businesses, put bikes in places that are really not safe, that may seem like, oh, it's a great place for a bike lane, and really, it's like taking your life in your hands. And so, I think we want really great, safe bike. And I think these trails might be a way to help cyclists and residents and property owners. So, I think there's a good way if we just look into that connection. And I know, I think we talked, Bill Wadell would have known everything, but he had passed away. But he knew where all these trails and all these properties were. But I know that there has to be something in place. Maybe even a meeting with Tom Murphy might be helpful.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll do that. And, and I think as many members of the council know, we will, as a, as a preview, we'll be actually releasing the long-awaited draft Bicycle Master Plan for the city later on this week.
And again, you know, my concerns with those bike meetings is that there are a lot of people in those meetings that do not speak for some of those neighborhoods.
That's right.
And I think that we cannot listen to four or five people in speaking for an entire district that really had no connection to the community, has not had a lot of conversations with the residents about it. And I think that the business owners hadn't been notified, the property owners hadn't been notified. So, I think I have a lot of skepticism when it comes to those meetings and, and the feedback that we're getting. So, I think that we need to continue to have those conversations. I really want to make it clear, I really think we do need bike lanes in the city of Pittsburgh. I do think that we need to do something to attract younger people to our homes and to our areas, especially in my area, where we have a lot of vacant homes. And things like this might be the things that attract younger people to our area. This and dog parks and some of those things. So, I'd really like to see them. I just want to make us, I just want us to do them right. And so that we don't have regrets down the road. And that we say that these are really, we had extensive conversations, really truly open public meetings, really truly open conversations. We didn't come in with a preconceived idea of what we want to do, that we actually heard what the residents want, and we're trying to work together to make all this happen for everyone, both pedestrians and cyclists.
Yeah.
And keeping in mind that there are motorists. And I think when we're talking about, I just want to be real clear too, because I think a lot of times we talk about these bike lanes, and we don't really consider the disabled community very much. There's a lot of times we're not considering how they're getting around. And so, I think that that has to absolutely be part of the conversations.
Thank you very much. And thank you for, for helping us in getting that broader outreach going. I know that's conversations you and I have had.
I took her, I'm taking her to a bar, okay?
Not, not, not me. We're going to have a meeting.
Well played, Councilwoman Smith. I'm not drinking that, I'm just taking her.
I just want to say, as, back when I lived in Bloomfield, I bought my house in 2000, which is 20 years ago when I was a 33-year-old, not a 53-year-old. And so, I was, at that time, I compared to the rest of Bloomfield, a young person in the neighborhood. And, and it was one of those places that didn't have a bike lane on its very busy business district, Main Street, and then got a bike lane. Many, so long ago, I can't actually remember if it was the Murphy administration or the Ravenstall administration. I'm assuming it was during Ravenstall. Because I moved in in two, like I said, 2000, at the end of the Murphy administration. So, that, those businesses really are, I think, maybe were alarmed then, because I'm remembering back a long time ago. But it is a place where now, in a neighborhood of 7,000 people, some, 70% of them were born after 1980, right? The, all the homeowners and the new residents, right? Like 6,000, I mean, like 5,000 or 6,000 or so of the people there in Bloomfield are under 40 years old. And when I moved in, everybody it seemed like was, you know, over 70. It was like, it seemed like everybody was 70 or 80 years old.
By the time the bike lanes are done, they might be 80.
That worked. And really, I mean, there are a lot of people shopping in the district who are getting there by foot or by bicycle and not by car, right? Even though there was a lot of fears about parking. And it was able to accommodate, it was a very, it's a very broad street, so it was able to accommodate both bike lane and parking. So, it didn't have really that issue. And as you know, I represent a lot of bicyclists. And, but I, it's interesting, the priority, as we know, has been to put bike lane on streets. And I've been fully supportive for years. But the, the calls that I get from people who are lobbying for more bike lane are split half and half between, we want more on city streets, let's say in strip district like Penn Avenue or in neighborhood streets, and why don't these trail, you know, on-street bike paths connect with each other? So, I can't, you know, I have to drive through a dangerous stretch to get over to another neighborhood. And then the other half, a good half, are like, why is that riverfront trail closed? I want more riverfront trail. And so, there is a really significant part of the population, even among my very heavily biking constituents, who want to be away from the street, who want the quiet trail, who want a safer connection, maybe because they have kids. Yesterday, this week, it was someone who had a health problem, who'd had open-heart surgery and didn't, was too fearful to be even on a city sidewalk. Because, you know, any, if he had any, you know, if he got hit by a car, he would really not survive. So, I do, I, it's really interesting that why I know the priorities have been for the last few years. I really have a whole, I think at least half of my conversations are about opening off-street trails. So, I just want to echo that and say, it, there's, there's definitely demand for both. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Director Rex, thanks for being here. Councilwoman Kell Smith, you know, when she talks about her paths, and I've talked to you about this before, I was against bike lanes on Broadway Avenue in Beachview, and took a lot of flak for it. But truth is, I'm a bike, you know, I'm not a bike enthusiast myself, but I support, I have a lot of bike enthusiasts that live in my neighborhood. You know, the big picture for me here is getting that Wabash Tunnel. We can, if we can ride a bike through that Wabash Tunnel, it opens up a whole new world for bicyclists in the South Hills. From Brentwood to Baldwin to Bethel Park, you know? Important thing is crossing Route 51. We also have a trestle, not in use, going across the Parkway from my greenway to Councilwoman Kell Smith's greenway. And I'd like to lock into your, your trails. So, and that would be the route in through the Wabash Tunnel. We will talk to the Port Authority about that. I just promise my bicycle enthusiasts that I will always fight for that. That's the big picture, and everything will take off from there, as far as the South Hills go. Thanks.
Thank you. And these, these are comments we love to take of ways that we can do better for the bicycling community and other options. Thanks.
I just want to say again, the Wabash Tunnel is a conversation that needs to happen in Mount Washington. Not, you know, with a few people that just decide what Mount Washington residents want. I think it's something that they might be agreeable to. But I think if you, they hear this conversation without them being a part of the conversation, they're going to shut it down before you ever even think about it. So, I think that people forget that they have a very powerful voice up there. So, I just really want to make sure we do it right. Instead of coming with preconceived notions that we're coming in and hearing and suggesting and giving ideas of what could happen, and hearing what the residents actually want and say. Because I think that, that, to me, it's, I'm going to fight for what they want. And so, I just want to make sure that we say that. It's funny to me, I tell this story sometimes. When I rode a bike, and you'll know where I'm talking about, when I was young, we rode a bike down Robinson Street onto Fifth Avenue, which was cobblestone, two ways, had a streetcar track in the middle. And we wore no helmets and flip-flops, and nobody cared about our safety, okay? I survived.
Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes.
Thanks, Director.
Thank you, Director.
That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus, Bill 63.
Bill 63, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Henderson Brothers for services relating to the brokerage of a one-year excess worker compensation insurance policy for a sum not to exceed $30,000. The contract allows for two one-year renewal options in the same price at the discretion of the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Last committee, Intergovernmental Affairs chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one bill, Bill 19.
Bill 19, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plans for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street.
I'm going to motion to hold, but I, motion to approve a discussion, I'll explain why first.
Second.
Thank you. I said this last time this was on the agenda. This has not gotten all the way, it's planning approvals. So, I just want to note for the record that this is maybe a half a dozen times in the last year, that square modules have been coming before they've gotten all the way through planning. And it didn't used to be that way. So, I'm just going to motion to hold for two weeks. You know, it's still, like, in process and going through with the public process.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Saying none, bill passes. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I do have a meeting announcement. Council will hold a briefing next Tuesday, February 11th, Council will hold a briefing next Tuesday, February 11th, with sessions at 1:30 and 2:15 relative to the 2020 Housing Opportunity Fund Allocation Plan. Any conversation from members? Councilman O'Connor?
Yes, I just have to call for a cablecast post-agenda on community and occupational lead hazards.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from members? Seeing none, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.